What happens?
Yes, we should.
Okay, we'll, uh, we'll call this informational meeting of the Hyde Park Select Board to order at after 6:00 on February 22nd. Let's see if we can go around who's, see who we have here. I know we have the Select Board is here. We got, uh, Rowley and Roger and Brian and Dave and myself. Of course, Ron's here. Who else do we have, Ron?
Danielle Smith from Salvation Farms and Jim Noes from Land Fair Memorial Library.
Okay.
And part of the hearing, there is a prepared agenda that the statutory requirements are just to walk through them. And I think that's, uh, we have an article on Salvation Farms.
Yep.
And Jim is here generally because he traditionally goes to the floor boat and talks about the library. So he's doing, he's doing what he usually does, just a different way.
That's, that's right. Well, and again, we do it all again next Monday too, right?
Two weeks. I'm sorry. No, you're right. You're right.
No, I'm not doing it in two weeks. Okay, so, um, shall I just go through and obviously the, um, the, uh, the first article is, uh, is a list of all the folks that are, are up for election. Um, do we have, and so far we don't have, I've seen some folks putting some stuff on front porch forum. Um, but if there's anybody tuned in or online that would like to say something. Okay, our next article is, uh, is, um, $2,000 for the North Central Vermont Recovery Center. I don't think we have anybody here for them.
No.
I could have. Um, I don't know. Now, Ron, when doing that, and, and again, we don't have, because folks aren't, folks aren't listening. Of course, this is recorded. People could, could, uh, could check in later. It's, um, again, and I, I mean, I just know personally that the Recovery Center is providing really important services to folks that have substance use issues all the time, but certainly through the pandemic.
Before you do this, I'm just gonna make sure I test, press the record button again.
Yeah, okay.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay.
So now that you're gonna present something, I wanted to.
Well, we just, the, um, the article two is should the voters appropriate $2,000 to the North Central Vermont Recovery Center, which is our local recovery center that provides truly invaluable services to folks that have, um, that are struggling with substance use disorders. And of course, everybody is, we've seen during COVID that those numbers are growing more and more. Um, they get some support from the state, but they, uh, they're looking to expand their base summon to get some communities from town. I have no idea what the number of folks that they support or provide services to that are in, that are in Hyde Park. Actually, I know the, the director and his family live in Hyde Park. Um, so we'll just see and, and we can check and see if we can get somebody next week. So it'll sort of be officially on the, on the, from somebody from the organization there. Um, Article three is show the voters appropriate $750 to Salvation Farms. And I know we've got Danielle, so we'll get her on the record.
Hello, I'm also attending as a Hyde Park voter. I am officially registered as of this fall, so excited to speak.
Good for you.
Um, I'm coming to you live from the Salvation Farms Morrisville office. For those of you that don't know, Salvation Farms runs a gleaning program throughout the Loyal Valley, serving towns from Cambridge to Greensboro. Um, and gleaning is the act of reaping after the harvest. So we help farmers find outlets for surplus food that they don't have a market for and serve that to our community members through community meal programs. Um, we are requesting $750 from the town, knowing that, um, or assuming that voters within Hyde Park are accessing services in border towns like Johnson and Morrisville, um, uh, through services like the La Mole Community Food Share, through the Food Shelves, through WIC, um, through La Mole Mental Health Services and others. So have some data from past season COVID. Obviously, we saw an increase in the amount of food insecurity across the state of Vermont. And right now, one in three Vermonters are currently experiencing some sort of food insecurity. Um, and Salvation Farms, the Loyal Valley Gleaning Program worked with 20 farms to engage 142 volunteers who contributed a combined 554 hours. Uh, we collected more than 150,000 servings of locally grown surplus and distributed that to 39 community-based food programs. Um, we're federally recognized, uh, 10501(c)(3) nonprofit. Um, and we provide these gleaning services of no cost to the community members. So we humbly submit this request and thank you for your time.
Danielle, do you, um, do you guys do any work with the schools?
Given COVID, we have, um, done some partnerships with schools. It gets a little tricky for, um, tax deduction for farmers to claim that as a tax credit. So that's not our primary outlet, but if, um, schools have after-school programs, we can provide gleaning surplus to them. Otherwise, we prefer that the schools have that relationship with the farmer directly.
Jim. Anybody have any, because actually I know we've, you came to the Select Board and talked, so this is, uh, anybody have any questions for Danielle? Okay.
Nope.
Um, Article four is shall the voters appropriate $500 to the Vermont Family Network? Ron, do we have anything from them?
Uh, nothing recent. I have, I can pull some of the documents that they sent in. The statewide organizational, I think this is the Northern Vermont Chapter. So here, hold on a second.
Anybody else from, this is, maybe it's already too late in the day for me. Brian, are you familiar with them?
No, I was wondering the same thing. I, I don't, I've never had any contact with them that I'm aware of.
Yeah, right. Sometimes people, you get their official name and you go, oh, that's who they are, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah. What'd you find, Ron?
Yeah, I can read there. There's a letter to the Select Board, which will take a minute to read if you wanna do that. Vermont Family Network letter from October. Uh, mission is to empower and support all Vermont families of children with special needs. Formed in 2008 by two organizations, the Vermont Parent Center and Parent-to-Parent of Vermont merged. Vermont Family Network has collectively shared the families of, uh, the families of Vermont for more than 30 years and created a virtual one-stop shop for families with children with special needs and the providers who serve them. We are writing you today to ask for your support, continuing to serve families in Hyde Park and throughout the state. Traditionally, primarily funded through state and federal grants, we find that waning funds threaten to slow our work and minimize the number of families we can support. We are reaching out to communities like Hyde Park, where we have served many families to seek your help. Your appreciation will help, appropriation will help ensure where the work we are able to do all around the state continues to happen with the same excellence and care that it has for the past 30 years. We are proud to serve over 1,400 families yearly with expert information, referral and assistance services provided by family support consultants located in Williston, Newport and Rulland. An annual conference and much more thorough through, and much more through our family support program. Vermont Family Network is also home to puppets and education, an educational puppetry team who teach children and parents all around the state about important topics like bullying prevention, childhood prevention, disability awareness through engaging performances that emphasize compassion, respect, effective leadership and communication. Each year, almost 10,000 schoolchildren benefit from one of these educational programs. Thank you so much for your consideration. The funding received will go a long way to ensuring our ability to continue to provide the much-needed services to families across the state.
Gotcha. I know. Yeah, yeah, thanks. I hope, I got it. I know who they are now. Okay.
Is there any, was there, there probably wasn't any breakdown of how many of the extra services they were?
No, there wasn't. I think they work with the schools, you know, get into the schools and then they have, um, sort of case calls, you know, directly to them. So we, we could ask for that next year as part of the, you know, help them get a better letter together. Cause usually most agencies do provide one sentence in the letter that says, last year we served 25 families somehow. You know, it doesn't have to be that specific, but some, something's helpful for the board, I think, to have it in there. Danielle's listening.
That, that's right. And while I was, I, um, I'm wondering if they're the folks that do the puppet stuff at the beginning of the school year in the elementary school. There've been, there's been, there's been a group that's coming and asking, oh, no, I think, I think that's who this is that do the, does, does the puppet stuff. Okay. Um, Article five. Now, do I need to read these articles? This is just where we approve the, where you tell people, here's the whole budget.
Yeah, there, you can just, I think summary is all that you need. People have access to this stuff. They want to see it.
Okay, it's, um, the proposed budget for, uh, let's see, July 1st, '21 to June 30th, '22 is, uh, $2,736,000. Um, and approximately $2,308,000 of that will be raised by property taxes. That's Article five, so that's actually the budget. And that budget would be the number if we voted yes on the three articles up above them. Um, Article six, are we, we still don't have anybody? Well, now we ought to give, Jim, you wanna jump in and say anything?
Nothing to say, really. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Um, Article six is just when we, uh, is when we pay our, our taxes, which is, uh, August 31st, November 15th, February 15th and May 16th.
I see Mary Walz is here.
Okay.
I am indeed.
Hi, Mary.
Hello, everyone.
Mary, we want you to know you're it.
I see that. I'm sitting here wondering where is everybody? What are they doing with their evening?
Well, man, we figure they're all gonna show up next Monday.
I wanna jump back to the budget real quick and I just wanna make sure people know that the $2,736 is the amount going to the property tax, I mean, sorry, the town budget, the property tax is the $2,308,000 that Susan mentioned, but the three articles above will add to that number, so the, the.
They hand to it. Whoops, sorry.
Yeah, they'll add it on top of the $2,308,200 and then you add in those three, $3,250 to get a new total, set the tax rate in July. So it'll be added to, it's not, not in the budget, not in that budget number right now.
Okay, sorry about that.
It's okay. So I make sure it was clear for people taking notes at home.
Well, we haven't, you know, like folks, that's it. If there was, if there was every year that if we were gonna miss our traditional town meeting, this was certainly, I, I expect a number of towns is probably pretty quiet.
Yeah, that's, uh, that is one comment I saw. I don't know if it's the News and Citizen or some other newspaper I was reading where most Vermont towns have deferred major issues.
Yeah, yeah.
Funding issue.
Hey, Susan, did it, did it make it to the radio? I know you're talking about.
No, 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 we haven't made it to the radio yet.
Okay. I'm kinda concerned with not having too many participating, especially with what I've seen over the years with the volume of people that come into the, uh, town meetings and stuff like that. It's disheartening in a sense.
Well, it is, but it's also, I mean, it's interesting, again, that so many more people have already asked for their, for their ballots. You know, so if you go from 30 to, I don't know what she got in today, but she was already at about 115. So, so people are definitely, and, and again, I think part of it, everybody knows it's pretty quiet. Um, we don't, we don't usually, we don't usually have a lot of, I, I, I think the Select Board in Hyde Park has a history of really trying to stick around the 2% or 3%. And, um, and I think voters are used to that and they, you know, they see in their own lives, the cost of everything goes up, the cost of insurance goes up, the cost of gas goes up, the cost of everything goes up. Um, so I, I don't, boy, maybe, maybe Rowley, you or Dave or Roger, I don't ever remember any really big fights about the town budget, which is not the school budget. Um, so I, um, again, we'll, we'll see. A lot of people are, I don't know. I, but I'm, I'm thinking previously, having done informational meetings, you don't tend to get a lot of, a lot of turnout. Yeah, is that Roger?
No.
So, okay, so if we don't have more people tuning in, we can, we can run, Danielle, you're welcome to stay if you want. Um, so are you, Mary, but we can, um, Ron sent a couple of things, just a, a couple of little quick sort of regular maintenance things that we can do since we're, um, together, just looking at the, uh, review of the paving stuff.
Actually, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah, the, the Green Mountain Access TV box is up here, so does that mean people can watch this thing at another time, can they? But they don't watch it live?
Correct.
Okay, I just wondered if maybe that's where some people were, but, um, okay, well, it was more exciting than I expected.
It's always good not to set your expectations too high, then you won't be disappointed. Yeah?
Yeah, I can. Thank you, Mike. Savannah Droney just, uh,
Okay.
Great. Great, great, great. That's good. And then like I just tell Mary that if you do do the Hyde Park Select Board search on the YouTube channel, the, a lot of the history of the Select Board is there as well for other meetings.
Okay. Um, why don't, well, we'll, if it's okay, we'll go ahead and talk about the, the paving and the, and, um, and just keep right on rolling because you know, someone may decide to chime in and we're happy to have them.
Hey, so did, uh, did Jim have anything to say about the library?
Not really.
No.
Okay, good. Just wanted to know if he'll be out yet.
Yeah, nope. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity, though.
You know, you need to make your pitch, Jim, and all the Select Board needs to buy their t-shirts to support the library.
For sure.
Yeah. Okay, Ron, what's up with the paving right now?
So we have, uh, two, two contracts is a good way to look at it. The first contract is an amendment with J. Hutchins to take care of some village street paving. And the second contract is a brand new one to get some quotes on Center Road and, and uh, the loop at Sterling View. So that's, we're gonna, I can go down, go down the list for everybody that wants to hear it. Uh, the overall budget is a really ballpark guess of $500,000. $245,000 is in the highway budget. The Village of Hyde Park is paying, uh, contributing $87,000. Um, and we're also have a pending state grant for $175,000. So those are the, that's the plan anyway. The bids are, I have no, I have no idea what's gonna happen to the new bids. The last year's bid, which Hutchins has agreed to keep, is $68.75 a ton. Uh, we had to pull one of their roads out, uh, which is the Fitch Hill Road. And part of the contract amendment with them is that one road because there's more paperwork tied to that that they have to produce for the grants, really to the water project, because the village is paying the paving costs through their water project, which comes with a whole bunch of strings. And Hutchins said that it's enough work where he couldn't hold the $68.75. So he's gonna submit a new number, uh, and Brian and, and Mark and I will look at it um, in the, in the short term here.
Do you know when he's gonna have that, that new figure?
Yeah, I think he's got, he's got to, he wanted to see the whole list from the board, so I think we're gonna, after tonight's meeting, we'll send that document to him, which includes Fitch Hill. I'll just go, I'll walk through it already. This is the contract amendment. Uh, Fitch Hill Road, it's the whole road. And, hold on, Mark just texted. I mean, hold on one second. All right, so the first one is Fitch Hill Road, which is the grant and bonding conditions. And then there's four other road sections, Hillside Lane, uh, which is at the bottom of Fitch Hill, a little side street with two, I think, two houses, maybe a third. Uh, Centerville Road from Route 15 to East Main Street, Eden Street from Route 15 to East Main Street, and Prospect Street, which is pending your negotiations, discussions with the neighbors. Uh, so we'll do same price, $68.75 for those four. And Fitch Hill will get a new price per ton, uh, when they see the whole thing bundled together. Then they're, then they'll have to be back for a contract approval to you, uh, probably on March 15th with that number in there. But I'll work with Brian and Mark between now and then to tighten, tighten all that up. I just wanna make sure that that list is something the board wanted to move forward on. If you wanna take out one or more of those roads, it's kind of the time to do it. Uh, you may have to depending on cost anyway, but right now I, I'm hoping we can get it all done. So that is the first one. That's the contract amendment. The second one is the new bid, which we do every year anyway, but this is, um, primarily deferred last year to, to cost and no state grants were awarded last year. This year they're planning on awarding grants. Uh, we may not know till, uh, May though. So it's, it may be a late May-June type period. So it's, we're going to ask for the 175,000. Uh, Center Road from Moorestown Town Line to McKinstry Hill Road. It's about 17,000 linear feet. Uh, Cleveland Corners Road, east of Center Road, that's the hill where the pavement ends at the top of the hill. Cleveland Corner Road West, which is from Center Road, uh, to just past the first driveway on the right, I think it's 150 feet. And that's a drainage turning movement problem. That curve, inside curve gets killed all the time from cars coming off Center Road. So we're going to build that up a little bit and get it a little longer. And then, and Mark, Mark wanted to get past that first driveway because it's a drainage issue right on that inside corner. So if we can pave it just past that first driveway, the drainage issue will stop. And then the last one is Sterling View Loop, which is, um, there's a, if you go all the way to Sterling View, just before you get to the Loop, there's a sharp left turn. And from just past that left turn to the Loop, uh, would be reclaimed. A highway may have some preliminary work to get in there, some drainage issues. I, we'll have to look at that a little bit. Before we actually get the, uh, maybe when the pavement's taken up during reclaim, we can go look at that a little bit closer and see if there's any more work that we can do to push the, push the drainage. So those are the four on the bid, the new bid.
The new bid.
It's a lot of paving, but I think it's, Center Road is ready. I don't know how the patch pays have been, hold up, Dave, on Center Road, have you been?
Snow covered. Smooth, it's smooth right now.
We don't have a bare roads policy?
Hey, hey Ron, let me ask you something about this Sterling Park here. With this new, as I understand that the, uh, that they're forming an association?
Yeah.
Will, will that have anything to do with the town road?
No, the town road is a separate strip of road that has nothing to do with association. We have to maintain that like all of the class three roads.
So, so we don't have, excuse me, so we don't have to go up and worry about, uh, right of ways and deeds and stuff like that?
No.
No, no, we, that road was accepted, uh, all the way to that sharp left turn that I was talking about. Originally with the whole project, so we have. Roland's live.
It's Roland. Hey Roland! It's finally happened. All right.
Last, last year you accepted, you laid out a new road and we had a survey done for the Loop. We're, we're all done with that.
Well, it would be.
So that's, go ahead.
I was going to say, you know, the, um, the, the state, but it's COVID money. So I don't know if they're going to figure out how to get any of this surplus money that's coming into the state to roads. It certainly would be nice if the town grants got up some and some of it could be used that way.
Yeah, no, they haven't told us what strings are, got to be attached, so.
Yeah, yeah.
The motion, I can, I don't even know if it's a motion as much as, is the board, uh, okay with those projects moving forward to contract amendment with Hutchins and then a new bid on Center Road and Sterling? If you are, then we'll, we'll have, bids can go up pretty quickly on the Center Road and you'll have those for March 15. The contract negotiation amendment process with Hutchins should go pretty well. We should have a final contract amendment on the 15th of March as well.
So you, you, you think it'll be starting the Center Road in May?
Uh, that's going to be a tough call because I don't know if we'll have our grant awards by then. So yeah, if we get the funding and all the bids come in the way they're supposed to, we could, we'll probably pave through July 1st. We're, we're, all the money I've been talking about really is a July 1 year. If you front load it, try to get some work done in May, we'll have to look at the budget, how much money's needed for July 30. What I've been talking about is a July 1 funding plan, if you will. We know the contractors will want to do it quicker. So we might, Mark and I can look at the current highway project and, um, highway budget and see if it's even left from last year to get them started earlier.
Well, and this.
What's going to happen up there through there to Cleveland's Corners? You're going to, you're going to reclaim that or what's?
The hill you're talking about?
Yes, from the intersection up to the top.
Uh, Cleveland Corner Road East, that's what we're calling it.
Yeah.
1,175 feet long, full depth reclaim, leaving asphalt in place, compact it, add chloride, pave with two inches base and two inches top.
Because if you don't do something that, you know, reclaim that, it's a mess up through there.
No, but you're, you're good with reclaiming that. So that's, that's what's in the current.
Okay.
Okay, so Brian, Dave, Rowley and Roger, does that sound like a reasonable plan?
Yeah.
Yeah. That was for me, yep.
Yeah, okay. Okay. What else, what else we got, Ron? Showed up yet?
I was just, yeah, Mark was at a, was out and he just got back. He was just, anybody have any questions for me? So he's, if you have any question for Mark French, we can get him on the line. But overall, I think, uh, during the town meeting, you would generally, um, you've told people that you're trying to get this paving line up every year. So we got 20,000 more sort of incrementally up to the 245,000 now. I think it was 60,000 when I first started working. It's about 70,000 a mile or something. So it's, it's really, it's helpful to have the money in there because it allows you to leverage grants to get, you know, sort of do the catch up. We do need somebody to look at the paving plan and budget to know where we should be. You know, is it 280,000 a year? Is it 250? Is it 300? So I'd like to be able to pin that down a little bit better. Um, you know, asking for 20,000 a year is pretty good. It's not, it doesn't push us over that two or 3% that you talk about for the annual budget increase. But I don't, I don't want to keep asking if we, if we can manage it to stop asking and keep it at a certain, you know, inflation rate or something. So just something keeping in your back of your, something to keep back of your head that, you know, when we pick up the budget in October, which is handful of months away, we want to, we want to look at paving a little bit.
Yeah, well, and see if, sort of between now and then, if we get a, get a better idea too.
Yeah, I just, we, we, we are so far behind that I want to make sure that we know what the end is of trying to catch up.
Yeah, and how long it takes to catch up. Right, right.
So that's it on paving. We'll, we'll see again on the 15th with hopefully a contract amendment and a bid recommendation.
Okay. Um, what else we got? I think we have, when we get through with everything else, we have some union stuff that we need to talk about, but that'll be executive session. Pretty quiet crew tonight. Dave, anything else we're forgetting? Rowley, anything we're forgetting? Roger?
Oh, I don't think so.
Not on my part.
Yeah. Rowley, you and I are meeting with Brad tomorrow night at 6:00 at the fire department, right?
Right.
Okay.
We received a letter of resignation from, uh, Mr. Webster.
I did in an email, yes.
We, uh, it's, it's going to be interesting and, and of course Rowley, this is part of, you know, we'll, we'll talk with, uh, with Brad about, but, um, I have, I, and I think what I sort of have to keep an eye on is the fast squad. Because of course it's been so difficult to get, you know, to get folks to join. And I was, I was talking with, uh, with, uh, George Cook the other day and, um, he said, he, he and Dottie are youngsters and of course through, through COVID, you know, there have been some calls, they just, they're just not going out on and they've been pulling back slowly but surely. And you know, if you remove the cooks from the fast squad, you don't have much of a fast squad. And it, and it's being very hard, uh, to, um, you know, the, to, to get folks, I think it's just like the fire department, volunteer things like that are very, you know, are very difficult. So I, in, in future thinking, we may, we may end up without a fast squad. I guess, I think that's one of those things we're just going to have to keep an eye on.
So, so I, I would entertain the idea when you're talking to Brad, seeing, seeing Brad hits, they hit about 50% of the calls and Brad hits 90% of the 50% of the calls is,
Right.
it, it is pulling the fast squad back into the fire department.
Yeah, I, I think it's, is, yeah, yeah, I guess that's, you know, Rowley and I, we can, we can talk about that. But I think part of it just comes down to, you know, do you have enough volunteers so that it really makes sense? You know, a one-person fast squad, I'm not quite sure that that's, I, I just, I don't know, I, you know.
I mean, the ambulance, police usually go to the scene anyway if there's something going on, 99% of the time they can. The ambulance, they're, they're right on the spot. I mean, they're, they're pretty fast.
Yeah, yeah. With, if, if we didn't have a fast squad, there's, you know, it's at, uh, they can, depending literally on where you're located. You know, somebody might get there faster than the ambulance can, but you know, if you're up in the other part of town, the ambulance probably will get there at the same, you know, before. So I just, I, I just, thinking about the things that we need to think about, I think that's going to, that's going to be one of them in my, again, my conversation with George Cook sort of.
But the, uh, to, to answer Rowley, to answer Rowley's, uh, statement, don't count on the Moyle County Sheriff's Department. They are not EMTs, they're not trained to EMTs.
That's right. I agree with that. But they do go to a lot of the calls, I, I've seen.
They, they go to a call, but they can't do nothing.
But then don't forget if we got the Moyle's busy or whatever, we got neutralized too. That's what neutralize for.
Yeah.
You, you, you know, when seconds counts, the ambulance is only minutes away.
Yeah.
I, I, I'd say the Moyle's doing a fine job, I mean.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. No, I think, uh, it'll be.
But they're always looking for members on the fast squad, Dave.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so anyway, that's just obviously one, one of the many things.
You ever seen me gutted ear?
I never seen you.
So is that why we don't want you on the fast squad?
That's right.
During the day or night?
I get queasy. But, but, but if we brought that fast squad, seeing Brad is the only one that ever, I shouldn't say only one ever, most of the time is the one that
Sure, yeah.
when he's not on NIMs, which is going to respond anyways. Uh, if, if you look at his budget and look at the radios and the OUDs, whatever you call the things, a, a, and the, the money we can save in that budget and maybe put it back into the fire department,
I think it, it would be a, a better investment in what we got now.
We got, uh, great minds are traveling along the same track, Dave. You know, oh, a, again, it's just because it's, it, it's so difficult to get people and, and, um, you know, Brad kind of becomes our one-person fast squad. Well, he's going to be the fire chief too, but then I don't know how, you know, what kind of conflict that presents or how difficult that is. But again, I, and we, we don't have to make any big decisions right away. We're just sort of on the list of things to think about.
Right, yeah.
Um, what else, Ron?
We got a, one item on the agenda, which was the, uh, 457 retirement plan. Need a vote on that.
Right.
Uh, the, the town has been a member of the state 457 retirement plan program since 2008. Uh, we had one employee back then that signed up, I think, then they left and it, it, because we didn't have members, it didn't affect the eligibility, but nobody else has signed up. So the new employee had asked about that because it's on our lit, literature and we found out that some agreements and motions had to be updated because it's been so long. So uh, there's no cost to the town except for Allison's, uh, giving the new, new hire, another piece of paper to give them a handout from the retirement program, which is run by a third-party Prudential Retirement Insurance and Annuity Company. Uh, all town, towns are eligible to offer it. I don't, I don't know of any towns that would contribute or anything like that because we're already part of Beamer's, which requires all town employees to join at 24 hours or more a week. So that's a mandatory retirement now. This program, since it's optional and by the employees' own deductions, you could say, uh, in your motion, which I'll go over in a second, to offer to all regular employees, regular employee being regardless of hours, as long as they get a, a weekly check. So we got about 12 to 14 people that, I think it's 12, that get a regular check. So it wouldn't matter if they work, you know, 10 hours or 15 hours or 40 hours or more. It's just anybody that gets a regular paycheck. But you have to set that. That's one of the decisions. The other decision you have to make is, uh, who is the client authorized representative? Which would be the Finance Director, Allison. And then alternate people that could talk to Prudential. So there's a short list of people that, maybe I want to talk to Prudential, but I don't want to make an employee change. So the town administrator and town treasurer could be on the list as authorized to speak to Prudential, but not to make employee changes. We probably should only have one person making, you know, changes for employees just for consistency. And then having the two people alternate, basically, uh, we would have to change the paperwork with Prudential if Allison left or her job duties changed. But I think it's good to have one person as a, as the client authorized rep and then have a couple of people back up that could still talk to them. If you're not on the list, you can't even talk to Prudential. So, um, the motion that would do it all is to, and I'll, I'll read it slowly. It's a little long. Motion to approve the 457 Plan Participation Agreement and authorize Allison Kuson to be the town's Client Authorized Representative to sign and process related documents with Prudential Retirement Insurance and Annuity Company and to have all regular town employees eligible to participate.
Okay, anybody got any questions?
Yeah, I'm still a little confused. That, that, that's not a town match or anything wrong?
No, it could be if you want to do that, but it's, it's not required. It's all 100% employee.
So can I have a, uh, have a motion?
Don't move what, uh, Don't move what Ron had just read.
Okay, in a second?
Second.
Hey, any more questions? Any more clarifications? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Okay.
That was it for that agenda.
Okay, shall we, Jim, still want to jump in? Got a big chance.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
We'll see you next week.
Yeah, okay.
Bye-bye.
Have a good evening, Jim.
You bet.
Thanks, everybody. Bye.
Bye.
Bye, Jim. Savannah's there. Okay, it'll take us a second to transition here to, did you have a, you got a vote on executive out those typing?
Oh, sorry. Need a move to go into executive session?
Don't move.
Second? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Okay. Okay.
All set. Thank you.
We're set, and I guess all we need to... Let's see, do we want to... Do you want... Oh, I don't want to do that. If there's not anything important, don't worry about it. Um, okay, so I guess just we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Okay. We got it.
Okay. Good job, everyone.
All set. Yep.
We are all set. See you tomorrow, Roland.
You did it, Roland. Thumbs up for you, buddy.
Yeah! Yay! Take care, Roger. Campaign hard!